Gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the council meeting to order today, November the 13th. We have a young Warrior fan, Isher, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please come forward, my friend?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The safest place in Newark today is right here. On a more serious note, before we begin, ladies and gentlemen, it's with sadness that I indicate that we are going to close tonight's council meeting in memory of Steve Katteby. Mr. Katteby is the father-in-law of Councilmember Julie Del Cantancio. Councilmember?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Yes. My father-in-law, in whom I met when I was about sixteen years old, I actually remember the first time that I met him. I was gonna go on a date with his son, and he just asked me, "Where are you from? Where's your father from? Where's your parents from? Where's your grandparents from?" And so we were just on this whole tree, this family's tree. And actually, it was a very nice meeting, and he did meet my family as well. And we decided that we were gonna keep this family together, and we continued on. And so he's actually been my father-in-law for over twenty years, and he's been in my life since I was a teenager as well. And so Steve Katcho Katteby was born on August 12, 1936, as a son of Rominia and Bonifacio. And so he did pass at eighty-nine, and so that is a very wonderful age. He did pass on November 4, 2025. He was one of eight children, and he settled in Alameda County, and he raised his three children, Jeffrey, Stephanie, and Bradley. And his career was in mechanical engineering. He spent retirement with his five grandchildren, Jelila, Isaac, Mateo, Leilani, and Michaela. And he was also a longtime resident of Newark. He really loved fishing at the Lake Shore Park, attending parties at the Newark Community Center, dancing and cooking. And in fact, even a few months ago, we still have some photos and video of him dancing. And so he will be laid to rest tomorrow at Altamesa Cemetery in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And please know our thoughts and prayers of the entire Newark community are with you and Jeff on the passing of his father. And as I mentioned, ladies and gentlemen, we will be closing tonight's council meeting in his memory. I'd like to invite Mr. Terran Singh to join me as we recognize Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month. Please. See, they think if the microphones turn the way, the other way, the mayor will keep his comments very brief. That's never gonna happen. You know, this is what makes Newark such a great community. When we have such diversity in our city, and we recognize the various cultures and religions and things that really make us a special community. And I want to thank Mr. Singh for bringing this to my attention. We've celebrated this in the past, but you know, we have so many different cultural, religious organizations throughout our community. We rely on the community to bring these important dates to our attention so that we can make sure that we recognize them, because there's so many different organizations and community members that are doing such marvelous things in our community. We want to make sure that we take the time necessary to recognize the importance of this community and the value, and the real value that they bring to this city. You know, we keep saying, you hear say it over and over again, "We're a welcoming community." We are welcoming because we appreciate folks who are of different religion, different culture, because at the end of the day, it's all about treating each other as you want to be treated. I mean, that's really the name of the game. And so it's with great pride that I, on behalf of my city council, issue Proclamation Number 1959, Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than one hundred and twenty years, and during the early twentieth century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms, lumber mills and mines, and on the Western Pacific Railroad. Whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today there are more than twenty-five million Sikhs worldwide and more than five hundred thousand Sikh Americans. Whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces, and significant contributions in our great nation in agriculture, information technology, small business, community engagement, medicine, and technology. I'm gonna stop here for a moment. The first time I met Mr. Terran Singh, you remember the first time?
Yeah, the first time, you were dog walking.
I was dog walking.
I like him.
He was picking up trash and litter on Thornton Avenue and over near Don Edwards Park. He was with other community members, and again, that's what, that's what community service is all about. Not that I'm gonna call somebody and tell them, "I'm gonna do this." You see an issue, you see a need, and you take it upon yourself to rally those around you that share that vision, and you say, "You know, we need Saturday to go do some cleanup." And that's the first time I met Mr. Singh, doing cleanup, not without any city recognition, but just because he saw a need and thought, "I need to step forward and deliver." And so I remember that day vividly.
Thank you, thank you.
I would have helped, but I was walking my dog. Whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all people through faith and service. Service is an integral part of Sikh tenants, and its impact is visible in the American fabric. Whereas the city of Newark is committed to educating citizens about the world's religions, the value of religious diversity, tolerance grounded in First Amendment principles, a culture of mutual understanding and the diminishing of violence. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, on behalf of my colleagues on the city council, and I'll ask my council colleagues to come forward when we do a group photo, do declare Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in Newark and urge all Newark residents to take the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences in Sikh Americans. So I present this to you, Mr. Singh, on behalf of the Newark City Council, and thank you for all the good things that you do for our community. You're greatly appreciated. I hope you know that.
Yeah, thank you, man. Yeah, what a day, what a day. I think first of all, thank you, Mayor, council, city staff, and our clerk staff that has helped make this happen behind the scenes. A lot of work happened, and I also want to appreciate everybody who's here on any day. You know, we don't get those days often in November, so I appreciate the community showing up. And as Mayor said, we are here, integral part of the community, and that is evident in our speakers. Both of them are Newark High Memorial product, and I also have Jindkar, who will join us too, on the stage just to be supporting. But I think I want to give the mic first to Nanleene. She's a freshman at Newark High Memorial, and she will share our thoughts with everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, respected Newark Legislature members. Thank you for taking the time this evening to honor the Sikh American community here in Newark. My name is Nanleene Carr, and I'm a freshman at Newark Memorial High School and the Vice President of the Newark Sikh Student Association. Tonight, I want to speak about a community who values equality, justice, and service, and has made a lasting mark on our country, the Sikh American community. Though Sikhs make up less than one percent of the U.S. population, their contributions to the struggle for civil liberties and human rights have been profound and enduring. Sikhism was founded over five hundred years ago by Guru Nanak Devji on the belief that all human beings are equal, regardless of race, gender, or religion. When Sikh immigrants who were farmers, doctors, and scientists began arriving in the early nineteen hundreds, they carried those principles with them. They arrived in America and faced challenges. When challenges came their way, they faced them with integrity, strength, and faith in this country. A county of hope, a country of equality. One of the first major battles for civil rights fought by Sikh Americans was the case of Bhagat Singh Tend in 1923, a U.S. Army veteran who served during World War I. Tend applied for citizenship, believing his service and commitment to American ideals would be recognized. However, the Supreme Court ruled that he was not eligible to gain citizenship due to the color of his skin. Though he lost the case, Tend's fight carried on, and his struggle helped pave the way for future reform. Sikhs have also been at the forefront of the fight for religious freedom. In the 1940s and beyond, Sikh Americans proudly served in the U.S. military. However, for years, they were told they could not wear their turbans or keep their beards, which are both sacred symbols of their faith. Rather than giving up, they persisted. After decades of advocacy, Sikh soldiers finally won the right to serve while maintaining their articles of faith. Their victory strengthened not only Sikh rights, but the rights of all Americans to live and serve without abandoning their beliefs. Sikh Americans have also made an impact during the pandemic in providing fresh meals made at our gurdwara, the Sikh place of worship, to feed anyone who was hungry. In addition, the Sikh American community raised funds to provide groceries, books, and toys to local families that were financially impacted by the pandemic. There are many Sikh Americans in Newark serving as engineers, theater teachers, dentists, doctors, business owners, and students that hang out with Officer Brandon, our SRO at Newark Memorial High. We all share a common thread. We all love Newark and our country. The story of Sikh Americans is, in many ways, the story of America itself, a story of struggle, resilience, and a constant dedication to keep this country remains just and free. As we reflect on civil liberties today, we honor the Sikh principles that guide so many of these efforts, to see the divine in every human being and to stand up for the rights of all, not just ourselves. As Thanksgiving approaches, I am thankful to be a Sikh American and proud Newark resident, and I will always serve our country and our Newark community, which is our duty to do as an American and as a Sikh. I would like to give a quick shout-out to all my teachers and coaches from Kennedy Elementary to Newark Middle School and to where I am now at NMHS. I love you all very much, and thank you for making a difference every single day. May God bless America. Thank you for your time.
Waheguru Jeeka kalsa, waheguru jeeke fathay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bennekor, and Nanleene is a hard act to follow. I'm honored to speak tonight at today's event, proclaiming Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. I lived in Newark for almost thirty years, and I still remember when I started kindergarten at James L. Bunker Elementary School in the fall of 1995. I was quite an anomaly back then, the girl with the long hair and a wooden comb in her hair, with the iron bracelets, and she didn't eat meat. Today, no one bats an eye when you say you're a vegetarian, but imagine the gumption it took me to tell Mrs. Street in the first grade that I couldn't eat the stone soup we made as a class because it had chicken broth in it. As I went through Bunker, Newark Junior High, Newark Memorial High, just my experiences with like the world stage and globalism, nine eleven happened, I was in the sixth grade, and with it, the horrendous Islamophobia and xenophobia that occurred with all people of color. And it felt like, honestly, my very existence in, in school for those like eighteen years was Sikh Horrendous Month every day. There were not that many of us, and so it was a lot of explaining of like, "Who you are?" And no, I'm not fasting. I can't have licorice today because it's Friday. Things like that. Being involved in the band at Newark Days, you know, wearing a turban, having like covered hair, always felt different. But to be honest, I think for children, our first community is school. As an adult, we participate in community in different ways. As a child, your community is your peers and your teachers and institutions you're in. And I think Newark did a really good job, even in the nineties and two thousands, when, you know, we didn't know too much about like other cultures or religions, of being a diverse place. That's one thing I loved about Newark Memorial. It like, the way I would describe it is the minorities were the majority. Like, the white student population was actually the minority for us, and that was, in a way, like, I think, for, again, students of color, and as a Sikh student, having just diverse experiences through my education, having teachers that were supportive, who made space and gave us agency, was really impactful. And so today, I think, looking at Nanleene, who is a freshman at Newark Memorial, and I knew her parents before she was born, so that makes me feel old, just seeing like how eloquent she is. And there's a Sikh Student Association at the high school, I didn't know that. Seeing the growth in the Sikh community in Newark, seeing, dancing, like how he ran for city council and how involved he is, that was stuff as a kid wasn't really on my periphery. But it's nice to see the strides we've made. And I think, in conclusion, for me, Newark is a really small town, but it's always been a really warm place. I personally have never felt, yes, you know, you experience things, but it's always been a community where we felt welcomed, my parents, myself, my brother. And coming back today to speak with my daughter and more babies, it makes me happy to see, you know, that like, for this next generation, having these like Sikh Awareness Month and just conversation and community, it's, it's, it's nice and it's warm and it's safe. So I really appreciate that. So thank you to the mayor, to the city council, and to Singh for giving me space to come back to Newark to speak today after all this time.
Waheguru Jeeka kalsa, waheguru jeeke fathay. Good evening, Mayor Michael Hannan, esteemed city council members and dedicated city staff. My name is Jindkar. I'm from Fremont, not Newark, but I'm a neighbor here. And I want to thank you all for this meaningful proclamation, which recognizes the month of November as Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month. America's strength comes from its rich diversity here. People from all around the world who seek a better future, and to do so, they make this nation even stronger. Every culture adds something beautiful, and in Newark, we are blessed to be surrounded by neighbors who are from many different backgrounds. Sikhs follow these three golden principles, which was given to us by our first guru, Guru Nanak Devji. Earn an honest living, share with those who are in need, and remember God at all times. During the pandemic, Gurdorasaiv, Prima, and Sikhs for Humanity embody these values by supporting our community through vaccination drives, grocery distributions, and providing PPE to school, first responders, hospitals, and thousands of local residents. We don't see this as charity. Instead, we see this as our duty to serve. At Fremont, Gurdorasaiv alone, we helped vaccinate over twelve thousand community members through twenty-two vaccination drives. This proclamation carries deep significance for us. However, November is also a painful month for Sikhs worldwide, as we remember the thousands of innocent Sikhs who were killed during the organized Sikh genocide of 1984 in India, an atrocity for which justice has still not been served. Despite this history, Sikhs continue to stand firmly for equality, social justice, and selfless service. Whenever a need arises, you can always count on the Sikh community for help. Once again, I want to thank city of Newark for honoring this Sikh community with today's proclamation. Thank you.
Bring everyone on up. All the folks that are here.
All the community members and everybody else who wants to join us, please welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure, my pleasure. My pleasure. Before everybody leaves, before everybody leaves, we'll take a We'll take a two-minute break to let everybody leave. But before you all leave, I do want to take a moment to recognize again Terran Singh, because it was this city council that appointed Mr. Singh to oversee Measure GG. Okay, we recognize his significant contributions to our community, and we thought, we need to find a place for this gentleman to serve the community beyond what he does on just simply a pure volunteer basis. So he's gonna oversee all the tax dollars that come into the city that help us pay for this beautiful civic center. So thank you.
Any pride it is on me. Thank you.
I left Terran with the following. You know, we built this on time and on budget. My goal is that you keep it that way. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll take a two-minute break so folks can exit the room, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'm gonna go and call the city council meeting back to order. And again, this is really one of the more enjoyable portions of our meeting when we get to introduce new staff. So let me start off by introducing Public Safety Dispatcher, Sierra Shelley. Sierra. Again, I always love, it's almost like the Parks Department. You know, we stand in the back of the room, because the applause will continue until I actually make it to the front of the room. But no, you know my views on dispatchers. They're the first call that people make when there's distress in their families or in their neighborhoods. A loved one's ill, a loved one is in critical situation where they need assistance, there's problems in the neighborhood, they call 911, and the first person they talk to are the dispatchers. So I say this not only to you, Shelley, but also to Connor. They're the first point of contact. They, they, it's important that they keep people calm so they can get the critical information that they're going to need to make sure that we dispatch or they dispatch the appropriate folks, fire, police, whatever the case may be. So I have a great admiration for anyone that works as a dispatcher. And so thank you for coming to work for the city. As a dispatcher on July 21, 2025, Shelley grew up in Fremont? That's okay. See, when it comes to dispatchers, when it comes to these critical jobs, we will reach across the freeway and, and ask them to come over. She attended John Kennedy High School. After high school, she continued her education at Aloney College in Fremont, where she earned three associate degrees in administrative justice, human development, sociology. Sociology, that's gonna help, that's gonna help. She is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminology through Arizona State University's online program. Shelley's prior work experience includes roles as a trainer and shift leader at Chick-fil-A, a barista at Starbucks, and a gymnastics coach. Now, Shelley asked me as we were walking in, you know, can I do some, you know, some gymnastic across the floor? And I said, "No, probably not, not tonight, but at some other time. We'll certainly look at that opportunity." But in her free time, Shelley enjoys riding dirt bikes, singing and songwriting, hiking and volunteering at animal shelters. Welcome to Newark. Glad you had me. It's always amazing to me, the, the extreme talent all of our employees have, Mr. Benun, with our city. You know, we talk about, you know, their education, but then when you get into their areas of interests and hobbies, these are, we really bring some talented folks in. I think we should have like a talent contest. And, and maybe we, we challenge Fremont, for example, to a talent contest, and we put on our best and brightest to compete. Connor Taylor, please welcome, come aboard. Taylor was born in San Mateo and raised in Foster City. He graduated from Hillsdale High School in San Mateo and went on to attend Skyline Community College in San Bruno, where they, where he earned an associate's degree in physical education. He continued his education at Simpson University in Reading and completed a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology. Another helpful degree when you're dealing with folks. Taylor began his career in public service with the San Mateo County Probation Department, where he worked as a pre-trial specialist from 2020 to 2023. He then joined the Foster City Police Department as a records specialist, serving from 23 to 25. Outside of law enforcement, he has held roles, roles as a case manager, providing WRAP, wrap services for nonprofit organizations, worked security for the San Francisco 49ers, and held various part-time positions at local breweries. Connor told me that he would give us a list of the top five breweries in the area upon request. In his free time, Taylor enjoys going to the gym, spending time with friends, and relaxing. He's an avid Bay Area sports fan who loves attending games for the San Francisco Niners, Sharks, and the Giants. Sharks are looking good. You know, we got, we got, I think, the number one scorer in the National Hockey League, I think, still.
It only took them the last five years.
I know, but we're getting there. Welcome aboard, Connor.
Thank you.
Good to see you. How about Police Officer Jonas Ansari? I always tell the new officers, you know, take a look at these five people. These are five people that, when you see, well, city manager, I guess, included, when you see them, you know, it's always, thank you for driving so safely. And the fact that you were going 40 in a 25, it was simply, you wanted to see whether or not I knew, you know, my role, my responsibilities, but I'm going to ask you just simply to drive safer. So thank you for that educational opportunity. Was hired as a, and I love police officers. We are the, we are the safest community, in my opinion, in the Bay Area. And a great deal of the credit goes to our chief, Chief Arguello, sitting back there in the corner, who not only hires and promotes outstanding staff to assume those top positions, but he's built a culture here in Newark where the citizens know that public safety is our priority, but that public safety officers doing the work that they do every day are appreciated, valued, and know that we are going to provide them with whatever tools they need to make sure that we provide and continue to provide a safe community. Chief, thank you for that. So Officer Ansari graduated from the Alameda County Sheriff's Department, the Regional Training Academy, in September of 2025. Officer Ansari was born in Los Gatos and moved to Fremont, where he was, when he was seven years old. Fremont has been his home ever since. I don't know, who writes these things? It's okay to say, you know, he lives in that community that's across the freeway.
The city, we do not speak to.
You know, that, that, you know, but that's okay. Hey, anytime we can grab a talent from Fremont and bring him to Newark, we're happy to have him. Graduated from American High School and went on to attend Aloney College and Chabot College before earning his Bachelor of Science degree in computer science from Cal State University East Bay. Officer Ansari's prior work experience includes serving as a security guard and later as a security guard supervisor, working as a software engineer, intern, and driving in the transportation industry. Outside of work, he enjoys staying active and spending time with his family. Officer Ansari's hobbies include playing tennis, breakdancing, wow, again, I talked about that talent show. Camping and making memories with his wife and children. Enjoy those memories, they're important.
Thanks, sir.
Police Officer Jackson Benjamin. Jackson Benjamin was hired as a police officer on September the 10th, 2025, after graduating from the Alameda County Office Regional Training Academy on September the 9th, 2025. Were you and Officer Ansari in the same class? Outstanding. Did you put in a good word for him? Officer Benjamin grew up in San Jose and graduated from Willow Glen High School. After high school, he attended trade school at the NorCal Carpenter's Training Center, where he earned his journeyman carpenter status. He plans to attend college in the future to continue his education. Before beginning a career in law enforcement, Officer Benjamin spent nine years in the Carpenters Union in San Jose, serving as a carpenter foreman for the last three years. He brings a strong work ethic and leadership background from his time in the trades. Outside of work, Officer Benjamin enjoys golfing, going to the gym, spending time with his girlfriend, friends, and family. Welcome, Officer Benjamin. Police Officer Matthew Zhao?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever you want, here.
Matthew was hired as a police officer on September the 10th, 2025, after graduating from the Alameda County Sheriff's Office of Regional Training Academy on September the 9th, 2025. By the way, I'm not sure if I went to that academy, but I know that a number of the council members do like to attend those ceremonies, and we're really appreciative of the training that you go through to prepare you for these opportunities. Officer Zhao grew up in San Francisco and graduated from Lowell High School. After high school, he continued his education at San Jose State University, where he graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in communication with a minor in public relations. Following his graduation, Officer Zhao joined the United States Army, thank you for your service, where he was proudly served, where he's proudly served for the last four years as a psychological operations specialist. He currently holds the rank of Sergeant E5. Before pursuing a career in law enforcement, Officer Zhao worked in security at Northrop Grumman in Sunnyvale. His professional background also includes a variety of roles, ranging from restaurant work to completing an internship with a nonprofit organization in Redwood City. In his free time, Officer Zhao enjoys spending time with his girlfriend and friends, playing video games, watching A9?
Oh, Anam- Anam.
Anaman? It's a generational. Staying active through weightlifting and working out. Welcome aboard. Officer Francisco Felix. Chief, we've got to get, we have to be getting closer to full staffing at this point, I would think. Beautiful. It's a pleasure to have you. Officer Felix hired as a lateral police officer on September the 10th, 2025. I love that. We saw opportunities, or he saw opportunities coming from another jurisdiction to our jurisdiction. I love that. Served as a sheriff's deputy with the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Office from March of '24 through April of 2025, and graduated from the Stanislaus County Regional Training Academy in February of 2025. Officer Felix grew up in South Hayward, near Union City. See how they put the near? We just, you know, they grew up in Fremont, near Newark. And graduated from James Logan High School in 2013. After high school, he attended Chabot College, and later transferred from San Jose State University, transferred to San Jose State University in 2022, where he studied public health with a minor in nutritional food science. Something the vice mayor probably knows a lot about. Before beginning his law enforcement career, Officer Felix spent five years working as a security officer for Meta in Menlo Park. Earlier in his career, he worked in the restaurant industry, including local favorites, Little Mad Fish in Fremont, and Red Robin at New Park Mall. Remember, we used to have a restaurant over at New Park Mall? Outside, that's a commentary about New Park Mall. Outside of work, Officer Felix enjoys spending time with his family, lifting weights at the gym, playing basketball, watching football, and gaming. His favorite food is burritos. I join you in that. Let's welcome all our new officers.
You should watch some anime movies.
Yes.
Anime, anime, anime. Anime, anime, anime. Anime, anime, anime.
Steve Cassidy. Two generations. It's the public comment section. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Molly Connolly. I wanted to bring to your attention that I wanted to appreciate, actually, some really phenomenal employees of the city. The first one is Matthew Farrell, who is the, let's see, Chief Building Officer. The other is Tanya Connolly, who's a maintenance supervisor, zero relation to me, we've never met. And then there's Dan Characharillo. So I've had work with these people over, I don't know, very brief periods, a couple of emails. But in the case of Matthew, we'll start with him very quickly. I've noted that Matthew can see through problems very easily, even though it's not explicitly stated, and sometimes it is. He'll see the threads of much larger issues and how they can impact the public and their safety, and bring it all together, and bring in the correct people to help resolve it almost instantaneously. So that's an exceptional gift, I believe. So I just wanted to point that out. Again, I, I may have met him once in the last 20 years, possibly. I, I know we've emailed on occasion, but I just find him an exceptional employee. The other one is Tanya Connolly. Without going into detail, I can say I've reached out to her about some specific things seen in other facilities, and said, you know, is this really right? Is this happening the right way? Because it seems, seems wrong. And man, she was so on top of it, just on top of it. Dealt with it immediately, responded quickly, corrected the situation, and then came back and said, I kind of want to follow up with you, Molly, more on what your perception of the city involvement was with this. So she really had a broad scope as well. And all of these things save the city time, money, and liability issues. So I think that's very important. And the third one was your urban forest supervisor, Dan Characharillo. I met him pretty recently at the birch tree planting, and I think you were there, so it was pretty nice. I may have emailed him last year or sometime. I was very impressed at the fact that he is responsible for such a large acreage throughout the city. And if you consider the fact that he has every tree between the sidewalk and the curb, any limb that falls, the health of any tree, the sidewalks people can trip over, all of the parks, all of the health of all the trees in the parks, and then organizing something like 60 people to plant 20 trees, and they do this several times a month. I mean, it was extraordinary, the amount of work that has to be done to go in the night before and auger holes and carry, literally carry water. It's an incredibly intense job. In Dan's case, I think he's a steward of the land, and he comes forward teaching future generations how to respect the land and take care of each other, and also to protect the accessibility for your first responders to be able to get to people in need should anything happen, as well as public safety, and I think that's often overlooked. And finally, I often see these people, especially with Dan, I can come home and see, driving home, I'll see him picking up garbage, you know, at night. So I just want to tell you, they're phenomenal employees. I know they've been with the city a very, very long time. I don't know how long, I really don't, but I assume a very long time. And I just want to thank you for bringing them to us and letting them remain with us and keep us protected. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you for your nice comments about our employees. Mr. Benun, you'll share those comments with the employees?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to thank Ms. Connolly for her comments. It's pretty rare to have such well-spoken comments celebrating city staff at a public council meeting. So I thank you for taking the time to come here. You said you did, you might have met our chief building official once. He's actually here in the audience. Sir, Mr. Matthew Farrell, our chief building official, is here, and he heard your comments firsthand. With respect to the other employees, I'll be sure to relay those comments to them. And in fact, Mr. Seanserillo is not here in the audience, but he does watch our meetings, so I wouldn't be surprised if he's watching them from home. So, thank you.
Chief, I was not going to call you out. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Our CEO for the chamber, Mr. Stephen Cassidy. Mr. Cassidy, welcome.
Thank you. And I want to just make a few comments. And first of all, starting with a thank you to the mayor and to the city for inviting me to the mayor's conference. It was great to see some old colleagues and meet some new folks. And I thought it was, you know, you dropped a pin when the mayor talked about how Newark's budget is balanced and, you know, looking at major projects, major capital improvement projects that are going to be funded through sales tax measure that's not being spent on operating revenue. I mean, it's just, I kind of feel like I'm in a different universe when I come here versus my hometown and some other city councils. You know, it's just remarkable, you know, how well Newark is run. And also, credit to your neighboring cities. I mean, they're just, the fun cities of Alameda County. They're, you know, it's a special region. And along those lines, we're working with city staff to have a tri-city mayor's economic forum in February, and we'll provide more details to you on that. But the whole, the goal of that is to think of ways to build greater collaboration amongst the three cities so that the tri-city area as a whole can achieve greater economic growth and prosperity than it would otherwise. That's the goal. But I also want to invite you to the, oh, you didn't put the time on? Or is it not going?
I would keep going, Stephen.
No, you do not want that. So the second is the Chamber Holiday Mixer. That's on December 4th at the Aloft. And we're inviting folks to come for free because of our generosity of our sponsors, which is Prologis Cargo in Integral Communities. And we're asking folks to bring an unwrapped toy or gift that we will be donating to Violet Life to in turn distribute to the folks in need in our community. We also might have an ugly sweater, a fashion show slash contest during the event too, but details on that to come. And then with the city, the chamber is- And then with the city, the chamber is coordinating, promoting a hotel industry roundtable. This is for the Newark Hotels. It's happening next week. And the purpose there is just to bring all the hotelers together, ask them what's happening, what are they seeing, what are some of the trends, what, you know, what are issues that where the city could be more responsive to or help them out on, and conversely, where the chamber can provide assistance. But also to try to prep them and have ideas as to how we can promote the Newark hotel industry as we head into 2026 with the major sporting events that are coming to the Bay Area, the Super Bowl and the World Cup. Now, I'm going to assume that I only have like two minutes left because it's gone off for a while. So here's the thing. I recognize that come December, the time to speak may be very shorn because you have a major agenda at that time. And I just want to tell you in advance, the chamber is, one of our missions is to be an advocate for projects that we believe improve Newark and also important to the business community. So we were in support of the Prologis project, we're in support of your arts ordinance, and we're also, we've submitted a letter to the planning commission in support of the Maori Village Project. And I just, you know, I have a feeling that that night that perhaps there'll be, you know, very vigorous discussion. And when I think about that, you know, I've been in settings where I was on the city council or on the school board, and you have, you know, you have a lot of folks that are, got some strong views, and you naturally, of course, will listen to everybody, you want to engage them, and you also, to a certain extent, want to please people. I mean, that's part of the job of being here in office. At the same time, you have to look beyond the crowd that's just right in front of you and think about the greater community, and think about the goals that the city has formulated and are working to implement over a series of years. I mean, that is why Newark is so successful, is that you've been focused, you've had stable leadership on the city council, in the city manager's office, and, you know, it's enabled this city to, you know, really punch above its weight. I mean, I'm so impressed with the Newark days. I mean, how many cities of 45,000 can have a three-day festival, really actually four days, that brings the entire community together? I mean, you don't see that in some of the major cities. Certainly don't see that in my city, which is twice the size of Newark. So I just ask you to keep that in mind, that, you know, it may be a tough meeting, but focus on what are the long-term goals for the city and how, you know, particular projects serve that goal, or should you disagree, don't serve the goal. But that's, I look forward to engaging with you on that topic as moves forward.
Mr. Cassidy, the event next week with the hotel folks, is there a date and time and location for that?
It's on the 19th, and I think it's in the morning, like 9:00 AM.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to other business. The other, yeah, the consent calendar, thank you. The consent calendar consists of the following items. Adopted resolution amending the 2024-2026 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to add capital improvement projects. Am I reading the wrong thing? I'm sorry. Right. Yep, 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 yep. You know, he's preparing to be the next vice mayor, so that's, thank you for that, I appreciate it. I had turned the page too quickly. The consent calendar. So there are a number of items on the consent calendar. One is the approval of audit demands. Two, the approval of the October 23, 2025 special meeting minutes. Three, the approval of the October 23, 2025 regular meeting minutes for adopted resolution approving and authorizing the acceptance of the 2025-2026 selective traffic enforcement program step federal grant through the state of California Office of Traffic Safety, OTS, and amending the 2024-2026 biennial budget. Five, adopted resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one to contractual services agreement number C23071 with CSW Struber Stro engineering group to increase the not-to-exceed amount by $117,279 for a new contract total of $1,014,497. Six, adopted resolution authorizing an increase to the solid waste recycling and organic collection and processing service maximizing, maximum rates for calendar year 2026. Seven, waive further reading and adopt an ordinance repealing section 15.04030 of title 15, building and construction of the Newark Municipal Code in order to conform to the updates to the 2025 building standards code that are adopted. City manager, any item you want to pull?
Not this evening, Your Honor.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there any item you'd like pulled from this consent calendar for further discussion? Colleagues, any items you would like pulled from the consent calendar?
Six.
Councilmember Grindal, item number six. Any other items?
Number five.
Vice Mayor, number five. Any other items? If not, can I get a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7?
So moved.
So we have that motion from Councilmember Cantancio. Can I get a second?
A second.
Please vote. So those items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, pass unanimously, 5-0.
Sorry, mayor's going to read that without its title.
Councilmember, number five.
I'm six.
Six, I'm sorry. Go ahead, my friend.
I'm going to be moving to approve this item. I just wanted to ask the city manager for an update on the negotiations about a rebate or some sort of credit due to the stoppings that we had in our account.
So I was hoping you could provide an update to that, but I'll be recommending approval of this.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide that update. If the public and the council may recall, I believe it was around July of this year, there was approximate two-week period in which there was stoppage of work related to the contract. This is for the collection of the waste, waste stream, the blue recycling stream, as well as green waste. Had to do with union strife occurring in another part of the country. We've, thanks to our environmental services manager, Mr. Scanlon, who's sitting there in the audience, we've been negotiating with Republic Services for a credit, for automatic credit for our residents, for all residential account holders for that two-week period when service was interrupted. Some accounts were affected more than others, but we are tentatively reaching an agreement where it would be for all residential account holders. We also are finalizing terms related to commercial accounts, as well as some compensation for staff time. We hope to have that agreement for council consideration publicly at the December 11th council meeting. If not, then we'll have it in January.
Oh, thank you for the update.
Thanks.
I'll move approval when that's ready.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Grindal. Vice Mayor, on item number five.
I just want a little bit more clarification. It looks like it's a 10%, it's over a 10% increase, and I was just kind of curious what it's for.
It's, I believe it's a 3.7% rate increase.
Is it a 3.7%? Because 117,000 over 1.014 is over 10%.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think you're referencing item F5.
Right, five.
Yes, five. That's a 10% increase. That's why I'm just going to curious what their role is and why such a 10% increase is a lot of money.
Okay. Mayor, would you like us to address this item or reach resolution on D6 first?
I thought we could move at the same time.
Sure.
Should we do them one at a time?
That makes no --
Let's go and do them then separately. Let's go ahead. Councilmember Grindal, you made a motion on item number six.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jorgens. Let's vote on, this is item number six. Thank you, Councilmember Grindal. Returning to F5. Mr. Benun, do you want to go ahead and address that issue now? Do you want to come back with, at a later date?
Oh, no, we'd be happy to address that answer now. Just earlier, I indicated it as item F5, I misspoke. It's item D5. My apologies for the confusion. I'm going to invite our city engineer, Mr. Mickey Saboda, to provide a response to that question.
You're right, it's D5.
I misspoke.
No, I did, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Yeah, so this item is with our consultant engineer. They are designing a section of Thornton Avenue that's part of the Old Town, Old Town Streetscape project. We have an agreement with Alameda County Water District whereby we will design for the upgrade of their water pipe, and they will, the water district will reimburse us. That was for a certain section of Thornton. We realized through the design of Old Town Streetscape and Thornton Phase 1 and Phase 2 that it made sense for us to continue designing an extension of that water pipe as part of our design, which means that they would have to reimburse us more. The item before you tonight is to increase the consultant's agreement to allow that to happen. So we will be reimbursed by the water district for this extra design work.
Okay. Well, you didn't mention that. Okay, because it's 11.56 increase, so that's why it's a significant amount. So thank you for the clarification on that.
No problem.
The one word I heard you say, reimbursement.
I love that word.
Love that word. So with that being stated, Vice Mayor, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I would love to motion it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor makes a motion to support F, D5, I'm sorry, D5. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Grindal. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Public hearings tonight, ladies and gentlemen, so we're going to go on to other business. Now we're in F. So the first item is adopted resolution amending the 2024-2026 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to add capital improvement projects. Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. If the council may recall, back on October 23rd, the council held a special city council meeting, provides back to potential amendments to the city's existing capital improvement plan. The purpose of the proposed amendments, essentially it's threefold. One, to reinstate projects that were included in previous budget cycles, but not included in the existing budget due to quorum issues at that time. Two, to include replacement of playground equipment as recommended in the park's master plan update. And three, to add the replacement of two fire stations. Council provided feedback and overall expressed support for these proposed amendments. The following week, the planning commission reviewed the proposed amendments and found them to be in conformance with the city's general plan. Tonight, we have a brief presentation from our city engineer, Mr. Mickey Saboda. He's going to recommend that the council take certain action to amend the city's capital improvement plan. Before we begin the presentation, though, I would like to point out for the public that's viewing this meeting, item F1 is the main presentation that summarizes the recommended amendments to the CIP. Items F2 and items, or F2 and F3 are two specific projects in which the council members may have a conflict of interest, and as a result, we separated those out for independent discussion. My apologies for the confusion, and if it appears disjointed, my apologies for that as well. With that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to our city engineer, Mr. Saboda. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hannan, Vice Mayor and council members, staff and the public, I'm back. So again, the items before you tonight, I'll be covering the three, the next three items are proposed amendments to the capital improvement program. You may recall, this is about three weeks ago, I came before city council as part of a special work session, and I covered a couple of different topics. I talked about a capital improvement plan in general, what it is. I gave some background, some history of how we came to the current 2024-2026 capital improvement program and why it was missing a couple of projects. I gave a sneak peek of the upcoming five-year CIP, which we are very excited to kick off. We're in the process of doing that right now, and we'll bring that to city council early next year. And the meat of the presentation was really to introduce new projects to include in the CIP, and these are high-priority projects that staff felt we could get substantial work done or actually complete in what's left of this current fiscal year. So that's the next six or seven months or so. That happened on October 23rd. Later that night, we were, I'm sure, all very excited to receive a $1 million state legislative grant from State Senator Ayusha Wahab, Dr. Ayusha Wahab, to help fund one of the projects. The following week, on October 28th, we did a presentation to planning commission as required by state law, and planning commission did find that the proposed amendments to the CIP were in conformance to the general plan. The projects that we are proposing to include in the CIP are grouped into two different groups. The first group are projects that were not, were previously approved but not approved by city council to include in the CIP last year due to quorum issues. So that's what's shown on this list, or at least most of the projects. They include the Old Town priority development area, Streetscape improvements, both the design and construction. Our plan is to finish up the design and start construction next year. This project will also include extensive community outreach and engagement because this project will impact the downtown business community. In addition, we've got the railroad quiet zone implementation to finish out the design of eight quiet zone locations. This is the first of many steps necessary to submit a quiet zone application with the rail agencies. And finally, Thornton Avenue pavement overlay Phase 2 Ash to Spruce Street. This is a pavement grind and overlay project to improve the street and new striping for travel lanes and bike lanes. The second group of projects to include in the CIP are new projects, and these came out of master planning studies that were approved by city council late last year, the citywide parks master plan update, as well as the citywide facilities master plan. So that top group shows three new projects that we're very excited about. They include upgrading and replacing the playgrounds at three parks, Birch Grove, Jerry Raybor Ash Street, as well as Maribou Parks. You'll note that the second bullet is in blue, and that is one major change from the presentation I made, or we made, last month. Originally, we were anticipating spending $824,000 for just a playground update with the $1 million grant from the state legislative grant. We plan to use that full $1 million for not only upgrading the playground, but we're looking at furnishing improvements, and staff is working right now behind the scenes. Bids come in really favorable. We're looking at possibly upgrading some of the sports facilities at that park. So there's a softball field, there's a volleyball court that needs to be freshened up, and if there's money left over, maybe we can add a bocce court or two. That's again, if bids come in favorable. On the bottom list, we've got the citywide facilities master plan. We've got two high-priority projects. We want to kick off the preliminary planning efforts for three and a half million, and they are the replacement of fire stations number 27 and 29. The parks project will involve informing the public in general, as well as residents nearby the park. We plan to do that, provided council approves these projects. And for the fire station projects, we're already engaged with Alameda County Fire Department to work on RFP, to get a consultant onboard to kickstart that preliminary planning effort. Again, provided that council approves this project tonight. Of course, I don't want to forget our formal recognition and appreciation of California State Senator Dr. Ayusha Wahab for her state legislative grant of $1 million to help pay for the Ash Street Park improvements. And that concludes my first presentation. I welcome any questions or feedback.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, are there any questions that you might have on what was just presented? Colleagues? Yes, Mr. Cassidy, please come forward.
This may be premature, but what is the estimate for the cost ultimately of the two fire stations, the construction?
Estimated cost is going to vary from $50 to $60 million, depending on when we can actually get construction going. The schedule is between four to five years. My goal is to expedite that, if possible.
Yes. You might want to just stay up here, my friend.
Other cities, obviously, well, maybe not obviously, are having to do the same thing. Their seismic, you know, stations are 40, 50 years old, they're not seismically safe. I mean, this might be an area where there could be some, you know, collaboration and possibly, maybe not, but possibly reduce the pricing. I mean, if you had one consultant that was hired to do multiple projects, maybe you'd get an overall lower price. Just a suggestion.
Great. And, Mr. Benun, I know that we're working closely with Alameda County Fire Department because they have just gone through a design process for their new fire station up in Castor Valley, and we are basically utilizing that design as we move forward with our two fire stations. The land, there may be a differential on the land, but I think, City Manager, I think we're working closely with Alameda County Fire Department in that regard.
Absolutely. We've, we're engaged with the fire department right now on drafting the language of the RFP. Our plan is to do an RFP 401 consultant to do both stations. And as mentioned, both stations have significant site And as mentioned, both stations have significant seismic life safety issues. Our plan is to completely reconstruct those two fire stations as one project.
It'd be interesting, Mr. Benun, to find out what the total savings, and maybe at some point in the future, we can come back with not having to rep, come up with a new design, what the savings are to our city taxpayers in terms of utilizing what Castro Valley has already done, in terms of then implementing that on our two fire stations. It'd be interesting to know what the dollar savings might be at the end of the day.
We'd be happy to provide that information as we continue with this process.
Love dollar savings. We'll make sure we send a thank you letter to Castro Valley. Other questions, colleagues, on this first item? Councilmember Cantaccio.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I did have a question regarding the Parks Master Plan Priority Group One. When we determined for those three parks to be the main focus, was that determined based on the population around that area, or the usage, or was it the deterioration of the current park? Like, how was that focused?
In terms of why we selected just these four park projects?
Right.
We selected those projects, those high priority projects that staff felt that we could get substantial work done or actually completed in what's left of this current fiscal year. So between now and end of June. There are other high priority projects listed on the Parks Master Plan. We'll certainly look at that as part of the five-year CIP that we're kicking off early next year.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Grindal.
This echoes the mayor's comment, but I really want to just compliment staff for working with the county and being able to streamline the process and the design, and not to try to reinvent the wheel, but to use a process that's worked, and that's going to, I would hope, expedite our process and save us money. So I just wanted to compliment staff on that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I only had one question on the parks that we've identified. Will the, because you mentioned there's a variety of different designs that we may implement depending upon cost. Will the final design of those park amenities come back to the council for review and approval?
It wasn't our intent to bring it to the full council. We were going to publish it on our website and notify the nearby residents of what those park amenities would look like.
Mr. Benun, have we done anything historically in this, in that regard, in terms of asking council to kind of weigh in on the design of the park and the amenities that are going to be provided, kind of the layout? Have councils weighed in on that in the past, as you recall, historically?
Well, considering these, the existing playgrounds were installed about 15 or so years ago, I don't recall what process the city engaged in at that time. I think, just to add a little bit to Mr. Saboda's response, staff has been diligently working on some playground designs. We would intend on sharing that with the public to receive feedback. The designs are consistent with what's contained in the Parks Master Plan update, but we would want to share it with the public to make sure that we're on the right path, that this is something, no pun intended, by the way. But if this is something that is palpable for the community, and this is something that they want, we would certainly want their endorsement. We're here to be responsive to the needs of the community, and we're certainly do that. We would bring any contracts for, for the playground, for the construction contracts, those would come to the city council. I would imagine we would attach the designs at that time.
Yes.
But if, if the council's desirous of looking at those plans before we go out to bid, we can certainly do that. I don't know if that would be something that would, I would imagine that would cause, probably wouldn't be able to get this done before the expiration of its existing fiscal year. I can't imagine that really has any significant adverse impacts.
We could, yeah, we can, we can take a look at it, if that's the desire of council, for us to come back to council with the actual plans.
These are, the reason I mention it, Mr. Benun, is these are fairly significant capital improvements, and as we look at these as really kind of neighborhood parks, they really do transcend the neighborhoods. Oftentimes, families from a variety of other neighborhoods will come and enjoy some of these park amenities. And I don't want to certainly create a significant delay, because this work needs to be done and is overdue, but if it doesn't create a significant delay, I'd certainly love the council, and whether it's after, I'd certainly love the public to take a look at it first and comment first, because they're the ones that are going to be utilizing these improvements. But if there's an opportunity to bring it to the council for, for just an overview, I would certainly appreciate that. I don't know if that needs to be made part of the motion, or just simply leave it at that. Comments from my colleagues on that? Any comments from my colleagues on that?
I agree.
I would love to be able to see the variety of plans after.
After the public reviews it, if that's possible.
I agree, that order is important, public first, and then.
Yeah. And I think the reason why that's important is because a lot of our parks have different amenities at different parks, so that families who may get tired of certain amenities at one park then can then go to another park and enjoy different park amenities. So I think it's important for the council at least to take a look at it and be kind of the second eyes on these projects, after the community's had an opportunity to weigh in. Vice Mayor?
I have a question.
Yes.
During my whole campaign time and since then, a lot of people have been saying pickleball or something? It seems to be crazy popular right now. Do we have any plans for this fancy pickleball game to play?
The Parks Master Plan, I believe, has got over 100 different prioritized projects, and I'm sure includes pickleball among other sports. So we can certainly look at that as part of the five-year CIP along with all the other projects.
Because the Halloween party, the pickleball dog, and the people even want, so it seems to be super important to people. So if we could just kind of put a little star next to that, please.
And the nice thing about pickleball, it can be either an outdoor or an indoor activity. So maybe as these items come forward, we can look at the various options there, because I know, as we read in other communities, outdoor pickleball sometimes creates impacts on the nearby residential communities that the councils at some point begin to regret. So maybe we need to look at that further. Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor. Just to add a little bit to that response, the Parks Master Plan update, when we went through that community process, it was a series of pop-up events, community engagement meetings. At the time, pickleball, interestingly, did not rank high on the priority list. And the plan was approved, I believe, in fall of 2024, so about a year ago. But we too at staff have seen a little bit of resurgence of interest from the community about pickleball, and it does raise some potential noise concerns. But we're taking efforts to address the needs of the community. So I'm going to ask our assistant city manager, who's working with our recreation director, on our latest efforts on that front. Ms. Hovorka?
Thank you, City Manager Benun. Mayor and City Council, good evening. Right now, there is a survey available that is out at both of our tennis courts, at Birch Grove Park and at Newark Community Park. So anyone can come up to the board there, scan the QR code, and take a survey, and let us know if pickleball is of interest to them. There's a very short survey, just asking when and where they would most like to play pickleball, if at our tennis courts. If there is interest in that, then we could pursue a pilot project of striping one of the tennis courts into a pickleball court, so it could potentially be dual-use. And I'd also like to mention, too, that pickleball has been available for play at the Solomon Community Activities Center. And so if there is interest of indoor pickleball, to definitely contact the Solomon Activities Center and inquire about that.
So to follow up with that, people, I've mentioned that, because I did know about the indoor pickleball. I was told over there by Mr. Cuevas about it, but people don't want to pay the entrance fee to come in to play pickleball. So that's been their, their situation. Can we double paint tennis courts with pickleball lines and stuff? Can we double dip?
Yeah, so that was the pilot project I mentioned. We did want to take a survey first, because as the mayor mentioned, there has been other projects implemented in other communities where neighbors have expressed concerns about noise. So we want to make sure that we are putting it out to the community, allowing for input for folks that play tennis at the courts, too, to make sure that we feel that there's opportunities for continued tennis play as well.
And I'm really hoping, as we eventually look at a revitalization of New Park Mall, that there'll be some increased opportunities for recreational restaurants and retail and all those other amenities that our community is interested in. So I think we have a variety of opportunities moving forward, and, but I thank you for providing the survey and putting the survey out there for folks, and, you know, that's, that's where decisions are made. When people participate in surveys and voice that these are priorities for them, this council, you know, makes them happen. So thank you for the presentation on F2, or F1. So F2 is adopt a resolution.
Your Honor, sorry to interrupt. Item F1 does have an attached, yeah, attached resolution.
Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second on item F1? Vice Mayor will make the motion. May I get a second? A second. Councilmember Grindal, thank you very much. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Staffer in San Jose, I was never able to know whether or not at the end of the day I was going to give a thumbs up, thumbs down, or some sign. We never, never, just never knew, never knew. So F2 is adopt a resolution amending the 2024, 2026 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to reinstate capital project 1366 Thornton Avenue pavement overlay Phase One Interstate 882 Olive Street. Mr. Benun?
Yes, Your Honor. We scheduled this item separately due to a recusal, so I believe it's Councilmember Jorgens who has the conflict on this item.
Yes, I will be recusing myself on this item, because I have a real property leasehold interest within proximity of Thornton Avenue, and that is my residence.
Thank you, councilmember.
Mr. Saboda.
Well, great. So this is, again, the second of three items I'll be presenting. I'll keep this nice and short. This is a proposed amendment to the CIP to reinstate Thornton Avenue Phase One. This is one of those projects that was prior, was approved in the past, but was, council did not vote on because of quorum issues last year. This particular project is similar to Thornton Avenue Phase Two. It is an overlay project from I-882 Olive Street. This project consists of grind and overlay the asphalt surface, install new striping for traffic lanes and bike lanes, and that pretty much concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for that brief presentation. People are going to ask, gosh, why can't the mayor be brief? Ladies and gentlemen, is anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? Colleagues, any questions on this item? Councilmember Grindal?
I just want to say this road desperately needs it, and so I really appreciate this, this coming forward, and if it's appropriate, I'll move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? My quick question and comment is, this is going to have undoubtedly a significant impact on traffic down Thornton Avenue. You can describe briefly, if you know, today, what that traffic realignment might look like?
I don't know what the traffic realignment will look like. I do know that the proposed road will maintain having two lanes in both directions. We are looking at keeping some of the parking, adding some bike lanes, and we are going to have extensive community outreach with the business district along that whole corridor, because not only this project, but Thornton Phase Two, as well as the Old Town Streetscape will all have significant impacts down that entire corridor. We do expect to get construction going on all three later next year.
And when I, when I talk about realignment, I'm referring to as construction is going on, on Thornton Avenue, not the final product, which I support wholeheartedly, but as construction is going on, what kind of impact would you see from folks that are accessing Thornton Avenue?
We'll work with the contractor on their traffic control plan when they actually submit bids. It may require a re-reverting traffic all on one side of Thornton, of the median. It may require them just going down to one lane in each direction. Again, those details will have to work out with the contractor.
And when the, when the project begins, what would you estimate the beginning of the project to the completion of the project on Phase One? Do you have like an estimated timeline?
In terms of timeline?
Yeah.
Two years.
Two years, okay. All right. We're going to hear from the community on that, aren't we, Mr. Benun? Thank you. I need a motion in a second. I think I got the motion from Councilmember Grindal and the Vice Mayor making the second. Can we please vote on that, please? And that passes with four i's, and Councilmember Jorgens recusing himself. Welcome back, councilmember. Item F3 is adopt a resolution amending the 2024, 2026 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to add the Newark Community Park All Amenities Play Area project. Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Item F3 is a part of the proposed amendments to the capital improvement plan. We scheduled it separately in light of the Vice Mayor's conflict of interest on the improvements related to this item.
That is correct. I currently have to recuse myself, because I do have real estate property leasehold interest within the distance of the community park.
My goal is to hold on to your property for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Benun?
Mr. Saboda.
Great. So this will be my final presentation tonight. This is for amending the CIP to include a new project, the Newark Community Park All Abilities Play Area. So this project, again, a new project that came out of the Parks Master Plan. It will involve replacement of all the tot and play equipment, similar to the other projects mentioned earlier tonight. With the exception of the $1 million state grant, the remaining park projects, as well as this one, planned, will plan to use park impact fees for funding. Estimated park impact fees after the completion of this, as well, as well as the other projects, is around $4.4 million. Similar to the other park projects, we do plan to do community outreach and let the nearby residents know about this particular project.
Great. Thank you for that brief presentation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Colleagues, speak to this item? Councilmember Cantaccio.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. And thank you for that brief presentation. I didn't want to say that, because it would be an All Abilities Play Area. I am under the impression that it is going to be slightly more expensive than if it was not, but I do believe that our community, as well as other communities, would really benefit greatly from having this. Thank you so much.
City Manager, my only comment on this, and I've made it known to you, is my desire for the city to look at the opportunity to try to keep some portion, or keep the serpent intact somehow.
Did we determine that it was a serpent and not some other animal?
We've conducted some extensive and exhaustive research on the matter, including looking at historical materials. And apparently, this was installed by community volunteers many decades ago, and it was called at that time, the Newark Monster.
The Newark Monster. I'm a big believer, ladies and gentlemen, in kind of keeping the historical perspective of our city going back, and my kids all played on the monster, and many of our other kids have as well. So I've asked the city, as they look at the redesign of this park, is, look at every opportunity to keep the monster either in whole or in part, or look at some other opportunity to, if necessary, to even relocate the monster, or portions of the monster, to another city facility if necessary. I think it's important that we don't discount the folk. You said there were volunteers, Mr. Benun?
It appears so.
Yeah, so, you know, we need to, you know, pay homage to those folks that took the time and the effort to, to put that there, so I would make that request as well.
And staff, staff are evaluating various options, including possibly salvaging maybe the head or a big portion of the monster and relocating it somewhere else in the park.
Kind of somebody taps into this council meeting. What are they talking about? Yes, Councilmember Grindal?
This is not a comment on the monster. I wanted to echo Councilmember Cantaccio's comments. It's very important. There are, there are children of various abilities in our community, so to be able to provide an All Abilities Playground is something that's long overdue. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. I need a motion in a second on this item? So moved by Councilmember Jorgens.
Second.
By Councilmember Cantaccio. Please vote. And that passes with four i's, and the Vice Mayor little recusing herself. Thank you for the presentations. F4 is adopt a resolution amending the 2024, 2026 biennial budget and to update the strategic priority areas. Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Item F4 is a presentation from our strategic initiatives manager, Ms. Roy Gonzalez. She will recommend proposed updates to the city's strategic priorities that are contained in the 2024 through 2026 biennial budget. Staff developed these updates, received input from the council, the council retrieved earlier this year. We want to ensure that city initiatives are aligned with city political direction and community. community priorities. With that in mind, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you, City Manager Benun. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the city council. I'm pleased to be here this evening to review the proposed strategic priority areas. Tonight, I will provide an overview of the background, the purpose behind these proposed amendments, and the process for which they were developed. Let's start by looking at the current foundation, which is the city's biennial budget. As you know, the city adopts a biennial budget every two years. The current 2024-2026 biennial budget includes Goals and Strategies section that identifies five broad categories: public safety, education, quality of life, community development, and city government operations. Each of these priorities is supported by an action plan that outlines how the goals will be achieved. While these priorities provided a strong foundation, in 2024, staff began reviewing the city goals and strategies to ensure that they were fully aligned with council's priorities and the evolving needs of the community. That review revealed areas where updates were needed, which brings us to the proposed updates and strategic priority areas we are presenting this evening. These proposed updates are recommended to make sure that priority areas align city initiatives with city council vision, strengthen the alignment between city projects, policies, and long-term goals, reflect the community needs, and align with broader regional priorities, that they incorporate the best practices in local government, and create clear, consistent framework for communication and accountability. The process for developing these strategic priority areas was collaborative and thoughtful. First, the executive team reviewed the city's existing priorities and identified where updates were needed. From there, staff refined these priorities and proposed updates to better reflect the current goals and community needs based off the results of the 2023 community survey. Then, city council had the opportunity to review and discuss the proposed updates during the city council retreat in 2025. Council provided direction and feedback. Finally, based on that input, staff prepared these strategic priority areas presented this evening for council's consideration. Let's take a closer look at the proposed strategic priority areas. First, foster safe and healthy community. This priority focuses on ensuring residents feel safe and supported. In addition to public safety, an example is implementing a comprehensive emergency operations program, which was identified as a top priority by the community in the 2023 community survey. Second, further economic vitality and housing for all. This area emphasizes supporting business retention, attracting new investments, and expanding access to affordable and diverse housing options in Newark. Third is boost financial resilience and excellence in service delivery. The goal here is to maintain strong finances while delivering high-quality, responsive customer service with pride. We will track these results through the biennial community survey. The next is to modernize public facilities and infrastructure. This priority will focus on keeping our buildings, road, and technology up to date to meet community needs. Examples include the implementation of the recently approved Parks, Facilities, and Broadband Master Plan. And the last is to strengthen the community through education and engagement. This area highlights partnerships with schools and ways to involve residents in equitable engagement opportunities. Specific actions include cultivating strong partnerships with the school district by collaborating on programs and community-wide events. Each of these strategic priority areas includes a definition and an action plan that will guide our work. Now that we've reviewed the proposed strategic priority areas, the next step would be implementation. If approved tonight, these priorities will guide departmental work plans, project proposals, and budget development, ensuring alignment with council's vision. We will update the existing documents to clearly link projects to one or more of these strategic priority areas. Over the coming, over the coming months, staff will begin incorporating these strategic priority areas into staff reports and focus our communications around these priorities. This includes the city website, public outreach campaigns, and community engagement opportunities. This approach will enhance the transparency and allow both council and the community to track the progress over time. And finally, we have our recommendation for council's consideration. Staff recommends that city council approve an amendment to the fiscal year, to the 2024-2026 biennial budget and capital improvement plan to replace the Goals and Strategies section with the updated strategic priority areas, and direct staff to incorporate them into departmental planning, communications initiatives, and budget development process. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. Folks, is there any questions, comments from folks in the audience on this item? Colleagues, questions, comments? Yes. Councilmember Grindal?
I'm very much in support of the strategic priorities. I just wanted to call out that the economic development element of it is also going to be helping with the fiscal resilience, so I just wanted to, obviously, the overlap is intentional, but just wanted to call that out. It's very important for us to stay focused on, on economic development and how it helps our fiscal situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two comments. One, as the strategic plan gets kind of developed, will that be something that will periodically come to council on a periodic basis in terms of giving us kind of a vision of what that strategic plan might look like and what goal it aligns to? Will we see kind of a, that, what that vision looks like?
Yes, council will receive updates in a couple of different ways. If you're, if you can recall the Goals and Directions spreadsheet that is provided to council that outlines all of the projects and initiatives that staff are working on. Over the coming months, we'll work on aligning each of those with the strategic priority area, so you'll be able to see the connection. In addition, performance reports reported will be reported to the council on a quarterly basis, all under these strategic priority areas.
Perfect. And I would imagine, as reports come to the council, the report will include a reference to which strategic plan this report or request aligns with.
We would anticipate adding that as a staple item to each and all staff reports.
Perfect. Is, and this is an action item, Mr. Benun, or informational?
No, there is a proposed resolution for council's decision.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no other questions. I'll look for a motion in a second.
I'll motion it.
By Vice Mayor Little.
I'll second.
By Councilmember Grindal. And that passes unanimously? You know, you need to say that it passes unanimously. You read the tea leaves. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go back, if I can have your, just for just a moment. The audience that was hoping to speak during the public comments section did not have an opportunity to get here on time, so I'm going to take the opportunity to go back to public comment and invite Mateo to come up to the podium for his public comment. Might need to lower the mic. Hello, Mateo.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mateo. I'm a Boy Scout in my troop, Troop 186, and I will be collecting canned goods this Saturday for the community to help people who can't buy enough food. If you want to donate canned goods, you can drop off your donations at the First Presbyterian Church next to the Dog Park this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, we don't normally comment on public comments, but I do want to make a thank you to the Boy Scouts of Newark who, year after year, take the responsibility to help those in need. So thank you to the Boy Scouts for their, their work every year. City manager updates, Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Three updates for your review and consideration this evening. The first one, I'll wait for Ms. Raj to get the PowerPoint ready. Ms. Raj, you can go to the next slide, please. The first update is that the city's Winter-Spring Activity Guide for our Recreation and Community Services programming will be available online beginning Wednesday, next week, November 20th, on the city's website. The guide features programs, classes, and events for all ages, including youth, dance, adult fitness, aquatics, and community events happening January through May. Registration opens on Monday, December 1st, at 8:00 a.m., and non-resident registration begins on Friday, December 5th, at 8:00 a.m. Next slide, please. The second announcement is that on Friday, December 5th, starting at 5:30 p.m., we will all be gathering at Civic Center Plaza for our annual holiday tree lighting ceremony. Again, this is at Civic Center. The public is invited for this free event, enjoy an evening filled with performances, crafts, letters to Santa, community vendors, and a special visit from Santa himself. Warm up with cookies and hot cocoa as you take photos and join in the holiday cheer. Activities will take place from 5:30 to 6:45, and the official tree lighting ceremony will begin at 7:00 p.m. And again, this is free and open to the public. And last but not least, celebrate Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 29th. We are proud of all of our small businesses and the positive impact they have on our community. Every purchased meal in support of small businesses strengthens our local economy and keeps Newark vibrant. Stop by for coupons and giveaways from Newark businesses and enjoy refreshments and family fun activities. This is Saturday, November 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Civic Center Plaza. For more information, please review our website, and I would be remiss if I fail to mention that this is being done in partnership with the Newark Chamber of Commerce, and thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for sticking around for the rest of the meeting. That concludes city manager updates this evening.
Mr. Benun, do be kind enough to go back to your first slide. I just want to make a comment. Ladies and gentlemen, make note that registration opens for residents December 1st. Many of the activities that we provide at our community center are much desired by not just residents of Newark, but residents outside of the city of Newark, so therefore, non-residents can begin on December 5th. So take every opportunity to begin registering for these classes or courses or whatever the case may be on December 1st, because they will go quickly. So thank you for the presentation, Mr. Benun. We're now at council comments. I'll start to my right, Councilmember Grindal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I just wanted to call out that I'm going to be holding a coffee with Councilmember Grindal on November 22nd at 9:30 a.m. at the Jarvis and Newark Starbucks. That's not the one in Safeway, that's the one on the corner. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Speaking of the Starbucks, Mr. Benun, I noticed it, the Starbucks at Thornton and Sycamore, they've actually put out tables and chairs. And I don't know, I mean, I know, many of us visit that Starbucks, but it's, I'm really pleased, and I'll give kudos to Starbucks, because I think it was probably them that went out and put the tables and chairs there for our customers to be able to enjoy the outside and have a cup of coffee, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Cantancio?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. This past weekend, I was able to attend Newark's fishing event at Lake Shore Park, where children from ages five to 15 were taught how to fish by Newark staff, and so I wanted to also thank the staff for putting that together. And remember, remember that actually, the lake is stocked year-round, so we do have catfish there, and if you do buy a license, you could fish anytime. And the catfish were really biting, and a lot of people were able to catch those fish, okay? So that's a little different from when the trout gets put in and they're not as eager. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgens?
Yeah, with the holiday season coming up, I'd encourage our community to, you know, as much as they are able to be like Mateo and the Scouts, and find ways during the season to give back and, you know, find community service opportunities to, you know, enrich our community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Little?
Well, I had Mateo as my thinker, as my helpful today, so thank you, Mateo, for coming and making my announcement tonight. I appreciate it. Scouting for food, just to let you guys know, Viala Blythe is completely bare. They have nothing. They have nothing right now, and with the whole snap situation with the government shutdown, there are, they have new people that are going there ever before. If you got a flyer on your house last Saturday, that was me, we, 29,000 steps, we, we, we were able to go to a bunch of houses, but if you did not get a flyer, that means we are not zoned, that you're not, we don't have to pick up. So you can come, like, like Mr. Mateo thankfully told us, you can go to First Presbyterian Church of Newark, the one right next to the Dog Park, from like 10 to 3 o'clock on Saturday. And if any council members want to come help sort out, you guys are welcome to come out and volunteer. Any staff is bored on Saturday, come get some cardio with me. But it all goes, everything, we are the only city in the entire Alameda County that the food stays in Newark. Everything else goes to Alameda County Food Bank, which is great, but every, the donation here stays in Newark with Viala Blythe.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And our goal is 6,000 cans this year, so I'm going to echo the Vice Mayor's comments. We have a lot of folks in need in our community, but Viala Blythe doesn't just serve Newark residents, they do serve the tri-city areas. So let's make sure that, you know, we, we look at our pantries and, and don't just simply give things that you bought that you don't want. Let's give things that people really do want, whether it be tuna, peanut butter, cereals. I'm sorry, not cereals.
Cereals is fine. We'll take, I'll take everything.
So let's, let's, you know.
Too cheap, but I'll eat it.
You know, so let's make sure we, we really give, and, and the reason that's important is, oh, by the way, Thanksgiving's coming up, and it's really one of my favorite holidays, because it's really an opportunity to be with family and friends and not be distracted by other things going on, whether it be gift giving, things of that nature. It's just really a time to get with family. So let's make sure we try to make Thanksgiving as enjoyable as, as we can for others that may be less fortunate. And a big shout out to the San Jose Police Department, Mr. Benun, who donated over 300 turkeys, from what I understand, to Viala Blythe, and please remind me the officer that was in charge of that program.
It's Carl Fredstrom, our sergeant.
Is Carl still here?
He was here earlier.
I knew, I knew he was here, and I should have, I should have called him out earlier, but it's a team effort, Chief, and please make sure that you share, Chief and Mr. Benun, with our officers, how pleased we are that they recognize the need, and I saw you out there, Chief, working on those turkeys, you know, back and forth into the, into the freezer, so, you know, thank you for that. Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I forgot. I forgot one last thing. If you guys cannot make a food donation on Saturday, I do believe that Silman Center is also doing a big food drive, and if you bring a certain amount of items with our Silman Center, I think you get a couple of day passes or something, I believe. Mr. Quebas, is that, is that correct, sir?
Yes, that is correct. They can bring in pass, food, they'll get.
I just remembered. Thank, yeah, I just remembered about this.
Yes, that is correct. So individuals can bring in food items, they are going to Viala Blythe, they will, we have some special tokens that people can use to come in next time, and then there's also a pass sale, too, where if you bring in a certain amount of items, you can get a certain discount on your passes, which people like their pass discounts, so.
And same time.
When are the dates for this?
Anytime right now, and so leading up until Thanksgiving and into Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just two comments. The first one is, I want to thank Mr. Benun, all the city staff that put on a fabulous mayor's conference yesterday in the city of Newark. There are so many city staff to thank. I'm just going to thank the entire city staff through you, Mr. Benun. But I did want to share an email that I was copied on that went to Ms. Gerhardt, and it came from the gentleman that kind of manages the mayor's, Steve Broshin, and Mr. Broshin said, "I want to thank you for an extraordinary meeting last night. I must admit that it's one of the best we have had in a long time, and the success is due primarily to your work and the work of your staff. The room was great, the catering was first class, the swag bags were fantastic, and our meeting host was very gracious for allowing us to host the meeting there. Everything went smoothly. I understand it takes a lot of effort to plan and carry out these meetings, so thank you for all your efforts. Additionally, I know that many Newark staff members were assisting at the meeting and during the planning. Please make sure that we extend gratitude to them." Again, just, the city of Newark just continues to shine. When you look at, no disrespect to my colleagues on, at any of their, you know, mayor's conferences, but we just continue to shine by putting our best forward, every opportunity we can to show what we're all about. And, Mr. Benun, your staff, I thought Lucid last year was the best, I thought last night was equally, if not a little bit better, so big kudos to the staff. November 10th. November 10th, the importance of that date, who's a Marine in this room? Any Marines in this room, November 10th? November 10th. It's the birthdate for the United States Marine Corps. The United States Marine Corps birthday is an American holiday celebrated every year on November 10th with a traditional hall and cake-cutting ceremony back in DC. The Continental Marines were established, the official birthday of the United States Marine Corps is the 10th of November. That was the day when the Second Continental Congress established the Continental Marines. And I had two brothers that served in the Marine Corps. Many of our folks in the city organization and around our community have served. We will be celebrating Veterans' Day tomorrow. I believe it's up in Hayward, if I'm not mistaken. So if you have the opportunity, I don't know if that information's on the city's website, Mr. Benun?
It looks like it's an invitation event hosted by the supervisor.
Okay. So if you have a veteran that has served, or you have a relative that has served, or you know someone that has served, or you see someone wearing just a Vietnam cap, because there's still a few of those folks left, take the time just to say thank you for your service, you know? Some of us are old enough to remember the folks that came back from Vietnam. And they weren't warmly welcomed back for a variety of reasons. But we've come as a nation a long way to recognize that a lot of these folks didn't necessarily want to be there, but they did what the country asked them to do and served. And we lost a lot of good Americans in that, in that conflict. So take the time to say thank you to veterans and take, you know, take the time to thank those that are currently serving because that is a, that's the ultimate sacrifice to put your life on the line for your country. So with that being said, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving because we will not be meeting again until December. And we will now be adjourning to close session for conformance with Labor Negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative is the mayor, myself. The unrepresented employee is our city manager, Mr. Benun. With that, we will adjourn to close session.